Six.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four meeting in Lacey Planning Condition Board. Welcome, everybody. We do have a member of the public here. It's awesome to see. Roll call. So everybody's here with the exception of Eddie Bishop and Judith. And Eddie's not online, is that correct?
I don't see anybody on there.
Okay, well, if he's traveling, he deserves that. So. I think Elliot, would you please read the land acknowledgement?
Sure.
Kind of cold on that.
You did. I just cooled it up. We, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe, Squaxon Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed and relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial, and the role today in taking care of those lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of disposition, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation-state city to develop as they have today. We recommend that committee members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
Thank you. So on the consent agenda, excuse me, the approval of the agenda. We do have an amendment to the agenda. We're gonna add discussion or actually informational piece under whole business about the tree preservation in the neighborhood commercial district, which is a follow-up from our last meeting. So and then approving the April ten, twenty twenty-four minutes. So the motion is gonna have to state approval of the agenda as amended. So I would welcome a motion.
I move to approve the agenda that has been amended and did you want the meeting minutes too?
Sure.
Meeting minutes as well.
Give me a second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. Public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission. We do have a member of the public here. Were you planning on giving anything tonight?
Think so. I didn't really prepare anything.
That's okay. That's okay. We're just happy to have you here.
Bring your friends.
Do any of the commission members have anything to report? Here.
I did go to the county commissioner's office last Thursday to diversity, equity, and inclusion forum that included representatives from Lacey Town Water, Olympia, as well as the county. And it was a really great opportunity to see all the positive things that are happening across the county to make it, you know, this more inclusive and equitable place to live. But a question did arrive. They, one of the members asked, you know, how are you integrating D I J into the comprehensive plan going forward? So I just wanted to let you know that that was something that the community was interested in.
Very nice. And I would tackle into that, that county has activated their DDI leadership committee. And every department and office has been asked to have somebody be a representative. So that is kicking off. It just kicked off this year. So it's pretty exciting to be a part of that. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll just mention to you one thing for awareness purposes. The city is actually right now in the, has a open position for a DEI manager. Heard. So that's kind of a first of its kind position here at the city of Lacey. That's gonna be a person dedicated. Their job is gonna be related, you know, solely to DEI efforts. So that job is open right now. So if you know anybody that's interested, it may be a good candidate, I think. You guys can apply.
A managerial level position?
Yeah, so this is somebody that's gonna be right under the city manager. So somebody working for Rick. Yeah.
Thank you. That's a good, good position here. Okay, department report tonight?
Just a couple of quick things. I think I previously mentioned that the Grant Beck was retiring. Grant's formal last day at work is tomorrow. So we'll miss Grant immensely.
So you can still go buy some duct tape.
Keep him here. Keep it taped to the seat. Grant's been a fantastic resource for us, you know, both in, you know, his previous planning director knowledge that he brought from Yelm and then also, you know, once Rick was an interim and then full city manager and being our department interim director. So really thank Grant for all the expertise and guidance and stuff that he brought to our department over the last two to three years. Very much appreciated and he'll be, he'll be missed. So stay tuned on the refilling of that position. There is some slight reorganization, I think, that's underway in the department. So I don't anticipate that that position will be refilled in its current capacity. It'll kind of shift to something else. So stay tuned on, on that, that front.
Just to get a big party?
No, Grant's not a big party person. We're just doing some kind of private celebration type stuff. But yeah, yeah, Grant's a pretty private.
When I was in the assessor's office, I got occasion quite often actually work with Grant when he was in Yelm. He has always been so awesome to deal with.
Yeah. And then the other thing I was gonna mention and invite you all to, and I don't, I don't know how many people here know or knew Ken Ballsley. Ken Ballsley, a staunch Lacey supporter throughout his entire lifetime, passed away a year or two ago. He was historic commission, parks board, ran for city council, I think, multiple times, but, but neither time successfully. He is going to have a memorial bench dedicated to him on Thursday, May thirtieth at two o'clock P M. And I can forward this invitation to the planning commission. The bench will be at the Civic Plaza, which is over next to South Sound Center. And I believe Ken had a role in actually establishing that and doing fundraising for that Civic Plaza when it was installed back in the late seventies or early eighties. So, you know, Ken, Ken is a definitely a Lacey staple that that's very much missed. And so it'd be great to have him recognized in that way. Also, our city's historian of the years, we have through the historic commission have a historian of the year award. It's, it's named after Ken. So it's the Ken Ballsley historian of the year. So I'll forward that invite on to the planning commission. If you're able to attend, that would be, would be great. That's all I have at this point.
You know, that kid, I, I love Ken. He was awesome. Okay, yeah, a very big character. You know, the thing I always told him is I didn't always agree with what he wrote.
No, that's right.
But he always made everybody think. And that is the role of every great journalist. So it's awesome. Okay, new business. We've got comprehensive vision, plan visioning. And it looks like Ryan and Hans are on the hot seat.
Yeah, all right. Well, this is gonna take the majority of tonight's meeting. So scrap in. We are starting, undertaking our update to our comprehensive plan. And so in doing that, we're kind of doing some, some visioning sessions with some key groups. Number one, we started with our city council. So the city council is doing, has done the same exercise as you are all doing tonight, as well as our youth council, the youth council. So it's the representatives from all the different high schools that, that is made up similar to our city council, but made up of high school students. They've, they've done this as well. They did it a couple of weeks ago with on tonight. And so you're the third and the last. And once this is done, we're gonna kind of shut this down, give this information to all of the different folks that are working on this. And it's really gonna kind of just set the stage for the initial steps and some, some priorities for updating our comprehensive plan. So you've got in front of you, if you haven't already, you've got the instructions. You all, hopefully you all have your iPads. So that's great. If you go to this website, mentee dot com and put in that code, you're welcome to use your, your phone for this. This is similar to what we use for some of that neighborhood commercial stuff. So it should be familiar. You should get a screen that looks like the one that's hot, got, on, Hans has got up on the screen there. So if you do, you hit that thumbs up button in the bottom corner and that lets us know that you're, you're onboard and you're logged in. I'm gonna be actually, Hans is gonna be leading the actual questions. I'm, I'm gonna be one of the people actually putting in stuff. The, the idea with it is that not only are you able to put in kind of your feedback on the screen, but this is also to encourage you to provide some discussion as well. And so if you're providing discussion, I'll be here to capture some of those notes. So don't feel like you have to put in everything on the mentee. If you're giving those comments, we'll plug those in as well. So there should be two, four, six, seven. There should be eight of us with.
You should, your camera.
Safari can't have a little page because the page cannot. The server cannot.
Everybody, it looks like you guys are good, good. Okay, we'll make sure, we'll make sure you guys are.
Cause the thumbs up didn't go away. I hit it twice. So.
Okay, Ryan, his, oh, there we go.
And that should auto log you in.
And then you hit the thumbs up. So Ryan, I got a question.
Yeah.
One of the things we did, the last time we did the comprehensive plan update when I was in city council is we would set up a booth at various community festivals.
Yeah.
And kind of try to get people to give their input. Are we doing that?
Absolutely, hundred percent. So this is, we are very much at just the initial steps. I'll get into some of the background here in a little bit as far as like where we're at in that process and, and talk a little bit about the, some, some of that stuff up, Jeff.
Make that number.
Hans, can you dive in there?
Nearly there.
Six, I am. It's just feeble brain. Don't.
Did everybody else get in okay?
Like that. One, six, one more time. Six. Oh, it's just. I just wanna go. It's one, six, oh, six, right? Six, six.
Six, six, nine, nine.
Six, six, nine, nine.
I'm not sure you did it.
We can't.
Their telemarketer trying to.
There we are.
I'm there.
Can you hear me?
We have somebody on the phone. Can you identify yourself?
Hi, Ryan. It's Judy Doyle. I have been having trouble with the Zoom link and it kept asking me to do a software update. So I just decided to pick the audio and call him with my phone.
Okay, Judy. Good to, good to see you. Are you able to get on to the, the mentee survey?
Uh, no. I, I followed all the links in the invitation and it kept saying, continue to do your update. And then it would circle me back and I couldn't get in.
Okay. Can we send her an email? Are you on your city email address or able to get to that?
Yeah.
Hans will send you a, I think the best course of action is just to stay on your phone. And then what we'll do is we will send you to your city email a link to the survey. And so you're able to participate in that. So give us one second and shoot that to your email and then you should be able to get to things through there.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, sure.
Bill, did you get on?
We'll just pause for a second until, actually, once Hans has a chance to send this, what we'll do is we'll start the presentation. We got a couple of slides that are background. Hopefully by that point Judy can get, get on and we'll get rolling the survey part.
Welcome, Judy, by the way.
Thank you. I thought it was gonna be more seamless than this. I'm usually in the room, but I thought I could just follow the links and have it work out.
Technology is great until it isn't.
Okay. So Judy, I just emailed that to you. There should be a website and a passcode to go along with that. So once you get to follow the website link, it'll prompt you to enter in a passcode. Really quickly, one of the reasons that we don't put this online is that if we do, while we're recording, anybody could also participate. So there is a layer of difficulty to it that otherwise may not be there. But that's what we're working through.
So good.
Hans, can you share your screen again?
Yep.
I apologize. I did. Shut it down. So then we'll get started. We've got a couple of slides with back, some background stuff.
Okay.
Okay. So today, as I mentioned, we've got a little bit of an introduction to the, the comprehensive plan. We'll go through some initial visioning exercises, some kind of general kind of high level. What are some of the priorities, your priorities when we're starting to, to do the comprehensive plan? One of the things we'll even get into here is like engagement, like what, what people's preferences are for the types of engagement, that kind of thing. As well as go over some of the, and you know, like I said, the main part of this is to not only put in information through the mentee system that we can, the good thing about that is that we can capture it and then it's kind of logged and make sure we can kind of keep track of it as we move on. But and the, the straw pulling as well. And we'll, like I mentioned, keep track of, if there are discussions, we will put that in manually here. So you don't need to worry about doing that. So a little reminder about updating our comprehensive plan. It's required to be done every ten years. Our statutory deadline, I think everybody is aware at this point, but if not, December thirty first of twenty twenty-five is our required update deadline. There are many GMA required elements. I'm not gonna go through them all at this point, but I'll just highlight a couple that are, are substantial for this next round of updates. Number one will be housing related, housing element related updates. A lot of that is some recently adopted state legislation that we're going to have to comply with related to things like middle housing and housing allocations and those kinds of things. Also, climate is the, the other kind of big one. Climate, we're required to have our own climate element now. And so we're, we're moving forward on, on that end as well. So we are getting some consultant help right now. So that, that's transportation, economic development, climate resiliency, and our overall kind of technical support and outreach support. I'll go through kind of each one. Transportation, we are, we've got a solicitation for RFPs and RFQs out right now. Hopefully have a transportation consultant selected in the next month or two that will lead the transportation element update. Some additional assistance for updating our economic development element. Climate resiliency, right now we are in discussions and negotiations with a consultant to lead our climate change and climate resiliency elements. We'll have some consultant help on that. And then overall, we have a contract that we've signed with M I G consultants. They are leading the overall engagement, an outreach plan that they will be developing. They'll also be doing the overall comprehensive plan branding. So the branding that we have associated with efforts when we go out to the community and those kinds of things. And then as well, the, the final part, part of their contract will be to actually develop the final comprehensive plan itself. At this point, it looks like our final comp plan will be a, essentially a website. So we are moving forward to getting, getting away from the old kind of comprehensive plan that sits on a shelf to more of an interactive website based comprehensive plan. It seems to be, you know, and this, this comprehensive plan needs to last us ten more years. And it seems to be that that's kind of the direction that people are getting their information now is really in, in web format. This will have a PDF option. So you will be able to get a PDF. If you want that, something to hold in your hand or print out, you can still get that. But the, the way people will access it is really gonna be through a web-based platform.
All right. And then with that, this is one of our first questions. It's a little bit interesting to get you familiar with the platform that we're gonna be using. But the first question is, how many years have you lived in Lacey? Judy, were you able to get in?
Yes, I voted on the five to nine person.
Excellent news. Thank you.
More than twenty, that's where it stops really? Where, where's the more than fifty?
Where's the one forty?
Yeah, so we did a lot of these questions we've used with the council, as well as the, well, the youth council and the city council. So getting a range here, but it looks like.
Is everybody able?
Is that everybody? Yeah. And then as a follow-up question to that, what first drew you to Lacey? So really kind of what, what prompted your move here? These are kind of open-ended questions. So you can type.
Oh, type in.
Answers for those ones. And then I will note that Ryan is also here and has the option to enter in comments. So we encourage you to enter it in through your tablets, but also Ryan's here to capture any discussions as we move forward into the other, other questions.
So where, why, why is nothing happening?
There's a submit button there.
Okay.
There you go.
You have not written the answer though. Do I just write? Things coming up. Yeah, it's something or not the over twenty years.
It's Dan's job.
Yeah, they're, they're not the ones like us that have been here over twenty years. So.
Has everybody seen their results come up here? Is there anybody that? So we've got a little number seven in the corner. So I just kind of wonder, I guess maybe that's seven that have responded. So maybe if Gail has it, yeah.
It could be me. Andrew responded a couple of times.
Yeah, so you're.
Stack the deck.
Well, it gave me three.
And Judy, are you able to participate? Okay?
I did. I put in the Billy Frank thing and it wouldn't let me put anything else in.
Okay.
I think you have a limit of three on this one.
Oh, there we go.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
So then this one is a two-parter. So the first part of this is, what was something about Lacey that you found surprising after moving here? Or something that you didn't know initially when you first got here or thinking about moving here?
Oh, okay. Doing great.
I think you sat next to the right person. Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah.
Does anybody wanna talk a little, a little bit about, I, I see a couple that are like, like traffic. Is that more traffic than that you were expecting or less traffic?
That was me. Way more traffic than I was expecting.
And then I would imagine growth, similar?
Growth, well, we're in the, we were in the number one growing community in the United States, Thurston County.
Yeah.
So we're, I think the pace of growth and the repercussions that.
Yeah, when I moved here, it was, it felt very small town, like it was maybe thirty thousand people. And this was a decade ago and it has just exploded this whole area is.
Yeah.
Now you're eight different.
That's true.
Yeah, my house was the Boondocks.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Big Lake, yeah.
Cool. That wrote that you could go from the highway to a rural area in ten minutes. That's what I liked about it. I could either go north or I could go south from the base and going north was just all development. That's why I came south, because there was still natural beauty and it felt like the community was inside the beauty. It didn't overtake the beauty. So that's why I chose to come down here and live here rather than go up where there was.
Yeah, we moved here in nineteen sixty-eight. College Street on a new development, Bel Air. Everything south of Bel Air was horse farms and tree farms. And College Street was a two-later, digits.
My house was right.
But I'm old, so.
Originally built the house on College that I live in, they sent me a packet. It was the, the lady who grew up there in the fifties and it was a farmhouse that had fifty acres across College Street. So the whole neighborhoods behind me were all part of that original farmstead property that butts up right on College Street. And I'm just, they had a couple of pictures and it was just a different world. It looked nothing like, not even remotely close.
That's awesome.
Hey, it just showed up randomly. I don't know the person, never communicated with them since. They just package showed up with pictures and a story and I was like, this is magic.
That is cool.
All right. So these next sections are kind of grouped by different themes that we're gonna see throughout the comprehensive plan. Many of these themes are requirements from the Growth Management Act. The next two questions specifically have to do with quality of life. This is one definition that I pulled, pulled from the World Health Organization. It's not to say that this one is better or correct over any other, but how our culture and values match with our goals, expectations, standards, and concerns. So with that kind of general concept in mind, how would you rate the overall quality of life within Lacey?
So we'll be able to see like maybe how the youth council compares on some of these.
Yeah.
That'd be fun to see that.
The, the problem with the youth council was we did it on a, on spring break.
Oh, no.
And so I think there was maybe four or five students there. So we kind of, yeah, it wasn't. It was very intimate, I guess. It was very, they got, you know, got some good discussions, but it wasn't the whole group.
I keep seeing ads on Instagram to try to get more youth involved. Are they struggling with getting students on there and such?
Um, yeah, and, and we just, so it's kind of a little bit of an aside, but the city manager's office just got done completely. city manager's office just got done completing the demographic survey that I for the all of the boards and commissions that you all might have participated in. And one major gap that they found is we didn't have anybody on any of our boards or commissions between the age of twenty and twenty-nine. So we had the youth council, which covered the, you know, the teenagers. And we had kind of everybody else that was thirty-plus, but we had a major gap in the participation of between twenty and twenty-nine-year-olds on any boards and commissions.
Just too busy starting family.
Starting families, starting careers.
The other, the other gap was was most of the board and commission members outside of the youth council, obviously, but were homeowners and not renters.
So this next question builds upon the last one that you gave an answer to. But what positive factors influenced your answer to the quality of life question? And we're going to ask the inverse of this in a second, so you can focus on the positive ones right now.
And you guys can give these to me, too, I'm happy to put in, I mean, what what are some of the positive benefits that you see, you know, in the community that that you would like promoted or highlighted as we move through the comp plan process?
Number one is parks, I think Lacey is known for its parks, number quality, I love that.
It feels like it's low crime, but it feels safe.
Well, Lacey is a very, very welcoming community as well.
I typed in, but it didn't show up.
Judy, do you want to give us your comment, I can just put it in?
Well, yeah, I said parks, trails, um, shopping options.
Just put in trails and shopping options, I see there's. Got a few references.
It's very clean.
Yes.
Anything else from anybody else?
Traffic used to be pretty quick, but.
I think we have really good schools.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just, I'm saying the same, where is this, are you hitting to make this work?
I was hitting the refresh button.
Gail, do you have anything that you just want me to put in?
Well, I was going to say parks and trails and air. No, no, not, it's not polluted.
And good roads.
Yeah, except for Cal.
It's coming along, it'll be there soon.
Visiting my mom and there were so many potholes in the roads, it was, it's nice to come home. Uh, down in Santa Barbara, California, but they had the rains, I think it just destroyed the streets and who knows.
Anything else? Uh, I would just add, it's a very family-friendly, that's not on there already.
I think we should put in there the ability to participate in things like we're doing.
Okay, and then, so now we're going to ask the inverse of that question, so some of you gave excellent, so I don't know where you can go from there. But generally speaking, what negative factors influenced your answer to the quality of life question? Or said another way, what things could be improved upon what's already happening in the community today?
Now, these, these are very, very similar, I'll say, to the to the council. At least these initial ones about the lack of certain amenities, like the dining gathering spaces, cost of housing. The youth council, too, that was another cost of housing. Certainly, the youth council, you know, we talked a lot at the youth council about, okay, they're, you know, these are high school, most of them seniors, getting ready to go to college. And some of them aren't sure if they're going to be able to come back here, because in order to, you know, live here, they have to make a a good income to be able to afford housing.
We lack a lot of opportunities for that twenty to twenty-nine-year-old. Where you can grow your skills and move up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
My my typed one didn't show up again. I said, um, loss of trees.
A great awareness, though, out of young people to, you know, be knowledgeable enough and understanding that issue and articulating it.
Yeah, and, you know, we we heard a lot about this the last time we updated our comprehensive plan, and I would assume that we're going to hear a lot about it again this time, but we heard a lot from people that said, you know, in order to afford a housing here, I need to work up north, right? I need to work in Pierce or King County, and so while I live in Lacey, I don't really associate too much, and I don't have a bunch of extra time to be able to dedicate towards actually kind of living here, I may sleep here. But I don't, you know, my the bulk of, you know, my waking hours are spent either, you know, somewhere else, like on I-5 or, you know, at my job. You know, that's something to keep in mind, too, is that, you know, Lacey, it used to be, you know, growing up here, Lacey was kind of the bedroom community for Olympia, you know, with state government and that kind of stuff, but anymore, Lacey is more of a bedroom community to, you know, to jobs, to the north of us.
That's a good thing to write, because I I think that's a really valid point.
Because I mean, that's.
I just didn't come up with that on my own.
There's your lack of twenty to twenty-nine-year-olds right there.
Yeah.
You know, the interstate.
They're working eight to ten hours a day at wherever their whatever their job is. And then they've got an hour to an hour and a half community each way, that's your day, right?
I'm doing that now.
But it's important to cultivate them, because they are our council members in ten to thirty years, right? So, you know, as I'm growing older, I want people sitting in those seats that have the community interest at heart.
I think I think one of the things, too, is that we have not been able to attract high-tech jobs here, which would make a big difference to our kids.
So were these responses pre-screened?
Pre-screened, how so? No, no, this is just as we go, raw information.
I wrote drug use, I didn't.
Yeah, I I think we're having some problems with.
Doesn't go through.
Yeah, so I I just put in, you know, the connection to the jobs to the north, so I'm not exactly sure what's going on with it, but well.
Yeah, the mentee does limit some specific words, but I don't know that any of those would.
That's what, that's the question, so so they are screened.
Yeah.
There's, well, probably I just go limit like.
So it's a PC program.
I think it is designed for larger crowds sometimes.
Type that in for you there.
Would you, right?
Houselessness.
Oh. That's the politically correct word.
To go to Joe's point about, and you're sleeping here but working, so I worked in Thurston. I mean, I worked in Pierce for fifteen years, and then I came down, I lived here, I've lived here for forty years, worked at Thurston for eleven, now I'm back in Pierce. And there's even more people that I work with that live in Thurston.
Yeah.
But work in Pierce.
So with the the kids having to work on their house after returns, and they're currently living in Puyallup. And Marins been going up to take care of the the grandkids while they're going to work on the house. So in the morning she leaves, it's thirty-five minutes to their house, right? To come home.
It's an hour and a half.
It's an hour and a half, yeah.
Big flow, and and, you know, we, since we hired Vanessa, you know, our our new director, she's got the opposite commute, so it's not as big of a deal. She she lives in Tacoma, commutes here, right? So that opposite commute is not the same as the, so that you can really tell on a daily basis that that outflow and inflow is out of Thurston County to the north in the morning and back to Thurston County in the afternoon or the evening.
And there is one way.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a big problem, there is one road. If that road gets screwed up, you're there forever.
Yeah.
I think that it, when I first moved here, there, it was, it took a while to to build that community, but there wasn't much to do, like, you can go to a sports bar, or you can stay at home or go to the groceries, there's nothing really to do, and I think the parks is great, you know, I could put my kids in stuff like that, but again, being a younger person at night, you know, you want to maybe see a a band or listen to the orchestra or go to a museum that has different cultural stuff. And and I think that developing something like that where people could go and actually engage socially and build community after hours, that would be really fun to. Yeah, to find a healthy, healthy way, not every.
As a single person, I'd have to leave the area to go on a date with someone, because there's just no.
There's no way to go.
There's no options, yeah.
Yeah. We're we're the same thing from the the council, a high priority of the council is to get, you know, after-hours activities for for all age groups, for, you know.
Nodding back there, see, that's a lot of nodding.
True, right?
Yeah, oh, by the way, I'm twenty.
We would appreciate that, too.
And and part of it is, you know, we we have to, we have to allow the private sector to provide those amenities, right? And so we need to, as a as a city, proactively work with those people that can provide that back in the community. So that's where our economic development efforts come in, is to make sure we're engaging with the people that can bring those things to us, understand that we're in a market that's really hungry for that stuff, and that whatever, you know, they they do will be successful. I think that's the thing, is that Lacey's, we've talked about it before, we're we're not in any kind of, we're not even in a first or second-tier market when it comes to certain things, first-tier market is Seattle, second-tier market is Tacoma, Everett. I would say Bellevue is probably a first-tier market anymore. We're in a third-tier market, right? We're we're with, you know, Mill Creek, Muckletio, North Bend, you know, throw Lacey into that mix somewhere there that, you know, people don't want to take a risk on a lot of endeavors in a community like ours, they want to take it in someplace that's going to be, you know, kind of bigger and better. So keep that in mind, that we have, you know, some preconceived notions when it comes to those, you know, kind of folks providing those types of uses, that that it's a big risk and it may fail if, you know, it's not supported here in the community.
You know, and we're a college town, right? We've got two public colleges plus a private college. And we don't have any of the college town amenities or vibe that you experience.
You don't, no.
Yeah, something that was definitely echoed by the city council, but also the youth council, really touching on the the vibrancy in that city center and that activities, nightlife. Things that, you know, there's the work component that draws people back, but also the activity outside of work that's just also is lacking. Anything else on this one? Okay, so Ryan touched on this a little bit in the initial introduction, but the comp plan is broken up into a range of different elements that are required by the Growth Management Act. The primary elements being land use, housing, transportation, climate change, and economic development. There's some other ones in there, like the Parks Program, we recently completed that update already. So that'll be something that's actually just adopted into the comp plan, but these are the primary ones that this effort is really going to be focusing on over the next year and a half, two years here. So I'm kind of getting a little bit more granular with that. And again, these are kind of just high-level definitions of what each one of these topics or elements really covers. But within the land use element, it really is supposed to act as a community guide for decisions about when, where, and how future development takes place. So with that in mind, what types of priorities should we have for the land use portion of the comprehensive plan? And given, I think these are, yeah, you have the opportunity for three different submissions for this one. And this is just knowing what you know now, so you don't have to have an in-depth knowledge of the land use component to really kind of provide feedback on what feels right within this context.
So it looks like some kind of themes around housing, environment. Maybe some transportation, climate, that city center. Anything else, any priorities that maybe aren't on here that you thought about after you pushed the submit button, or anything that anybody wants to kind of explain? A little bit more about what they put in?
So I tried to type in broader interest development, which kind of goes with the last thing we talked about, but it wouldn't let me put in that many characters, but basically.
Yeah, mine couldn't go in either.
Yeah, it's basically, you know, let's make our commercial development have a broader interest to more age groups. You know, we've got great places to eat here, but beyond that, as we've heard comments, what do you do?
Get your nails done and your hair.
One, Daphne, you could get one nail done at every salon and just go step to step, there's so many nail salons here.
Yeah, I could do nails and toes every, yeah, there's at least twenty of them.
But you know, we used to have a bowling alley, and and that's gone now, and we used to have the drive-in theater, and that's gone now.
Well, and I think, you know, and I've mentioned this before, I don't know if it's a plan commissioner to others, but South Sound Center, when, you know, when that went away, we really lost kind of the the center of town.
Yes, we did.
You know, if you were around long enough to remember South Sound Center, it's where, you know, you had, you know, at Christmas time, you had stuff in the inside of the mall with, you know, jazz bands playing music, and, you know, just that's where, that's where everybody kind of gathered as a community. The the third of July fireworks were there back then, right? And then, you know, the mall itself kind of died, was dying on the vine in the late nineties, and when Target came in, it it helped revitalize some of that, but what we lost was we lost that community center that we've still, ever since then, for twenty-five years now, have been kind of seeking to find.
Trying to find one.
Yeah, and, you know, while we have some gathering spaces, we have parks, we have, you know, those kinds of places, we don't have that true center anymore that we used to, and and that's, again, the South Sound Center was a private enterprise that, you know, it wasn't something that the city was doing. It was a, you know, private place, it was, but it was kind of that part of the community in a lot of aspects that we've we've kind of lost and never been able to to have again.
And I think that's the biggest thing that Lacey is missing right now, is that spot or or area where you're at because of whatever you need to do, right? Whether it's your taxes or your shopping or whatever, where you're running into neighbors just randomly because they happen to be there at the same time. And that turns into a twenty-minute, thirty-minute conversation, or hey, let's go have a pop, we don't have that type of a place here.
Something I have a concern about is the whole large development buildings. What happens when those buildings become abandoned?
The warehouses, as Jeff.
The warehouses, the safeways, or the old Abersons, or.
Yeah, even the warehouses.
Are are they responsible for remediating the scene?
No, I mean, so, you know, for example, you know, Walmarts have been turned into, you know, libraries, or, you know, it it it's, you know, at some point, if it no longer becomes viable for whatever it was built as, it's either converted to another use if somebody purchase it, purchases it, or it's torn down and developed to something new. So i- and I I think the biggest concern that I would have is related to, especially the large warehouses in Hox. So i- i- and I I think the biggest concern that I would have is related to especially the large warehouses in Hoxbury where you have. You know, million-plus square foot uses that are, yeah, that are very hard to adapt, I mean. That that's much bigger than a fifty thousand, sixty thousand square foot Walmart. Um, what I've, you know, what. I I've seen other communities do, not to say it could could happen here, but you never know is like, you know, places that need a lot of space. Uh, movie studios, those kinds of things that need those space, those are some of those kinds of uses that can backfill some of that. But I mean, it's it's incredibly difficult because those are, they're big, open spaces, no doubt, but they're, you know, they're not.
They're not designed to live in particular.
You know, you know what I've seen them turned into in other places is um youth uh indoor sports centers. Like soccer, indoor soccer and things like that, wh- uh where I used to live in East Coast, some of those were turned into. Multipurpose youth rec areas.
I just see a need for us to create some sort of. Repurposed to, you know, to landowners or etc. If they're not reusing the structures, you know, whether it be a Sears Roebuck, you know, that's. Sitting there for ten years empty with druggies full or Tom Water Brewery, you know, look what happened to that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it what it comes down to is is, um, you know, we gotta address some of those things through code enforcement, but that's, it's essentially private property, right? And so unless somebody's doing something illegal, um, you know, we can't necessarily. While we can do things through our economic development efforts to try to get that space backfilled and reengage. We can't necessarily be punitive towards somebody for just owning a building that's vacant.
Well, it seems like we're often reactive on the planning process and I know we can get consultants and stuff, but do we need consultants to let us see what it's gonna look like? What is, you know, because we're just kinda trying to catch up, you know? You know, as as certain industries or businesses become less relevant, we're not repurposing that or heading in the direction of the relevant businesses or whatever. So like, do we need some visionaries as consultants, people that are, you know?
But how do you, so so to Ryan's point about it's private property, right? How do you do that? I mean, if you want, so so let's put this down on the granular level, I mean, do any of us want? The city to be able to look at us if if we have like a job opportunity in the Midwest. And we decide to leave our house vacant for three years. Does the city, do we want the city to be able to step in and say, no, you can't do that?
That doesn't affect the entire.
One's residential, one's commercial, so I I don't think they're equivocal.
You know, you think about, like Elliot mentioned, like with the warehouses, do, as part of our planning, do we make sure they have a fifty-year plan? Of what that building will be used for versus the fifteen or twenty-year plan of what they're, what they're gonna house in there? And I think, you know, you you make sure that there is a a longer-term vision in how it's designed, the structure, how to potentially repurpose it or something.
I'm thinking about the climate that we're gonna be addressing shortly and, you know, are, is there any bond? Is there any guarantee that these people that develop these sites are going to maintain them in this order? Outside of like the landscaping and simple code enforcement, there may be long-term ramifications of conducting the business there, who knows? I I don't have a specific use case, but I can foresee that happening where, you know, there there is some degradation to the area. And it's like, okay, well, it's forty years down the road, we're just gonna pass it along to someone else and then. You know, who whoever's gonna get stuck with the bag or we go out of business and the city's now on the hook for this cleanup or or this, you know, repurpose and. With a home, it's not a big deal, but with a giant billion-square-foot warehouse, that's a huge.
Druggies or.
Filth, yeah, you know, with any, anything, like that is a massive burden. And it feels like we get stuck on the ba- on the hook with that, but it's also feels like that might be a huge. Uh, red flag to industry and a big way to push people away unintentionally, so that's a real tight rope, but I. It's something I'd like to think about more as we get to that and in parking is one. I think just as a city, we need less spots, like I will go to the South Center, it's a sea of parking spots and I know there's not a lot of attendance there, right? But look at any large edifice like that, the the Capitol Mall, look at any of those places, we are. Providing so much parking, we just have blank space, impervious space doing nothing but.
But it's kind of a double-edged sword and my neighborhood, they, it's kind of like, I don't know, it seems like the experimental block for different types of. Triplexes and and things like that and as they're putting in these multi-family homes on lots that were traditionally for, you know. Thousand-square-foot houses, there's not enough parking for the the giant trucks. That a lot of the people from the military base are are using, so they don't fit in the in. Garages, that's a hard word for me to say, in in the garages and uh and then they're out on the streets and then it's. And the neighborhoods are not designed for for cars, it's it's so you have these narrow streets. And then there's this proliferation of of vehicles that are are spreading out and it it's. A source of contention because then, you know, our neighborhoods used to be walkable because people parked off the street. So there's no parking in certain neighborhoods and there's, there's no sidewalks for children and. People to to walk the the neighborhood safely because, you know, there's, there's cars and. And then you see those giant sprawls and it's not even like purposeful use, they, it's, there's not, um. I see in other places, like if there's a big parking lot, there's uh what you call the solar panels. Or, you know, even in some places where you're talking about like in the neighborhood commercial where the the parking is under or over or somewhere. Instead of just that sprawl, but it absorbs so much heat and releases so much heat, like it's just horrible for the climate.
Yeah, and so that's like you said, it's double-edged sword, you know, you're.
Yeah, yeah, and the commercial element, we have too much and the residential, it seems we don't have enough. Cause I've I've definitely experienced that where you can barely get down a neighborhood street. Because it's double parked on, it's parked on both sides and you are mirror to mirror with these people and there's no room for people to come the other direction. Yes, it does, absolutely.
So we'll jump in because a lot of these subjects, there's, we have other housing element and sustainability ones that. Might might be a good fit for some of these, so uh. The next topic being the housing element, so uh this one is really intended to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments. Promote a variety of residential densities and housing types and the preservation of existing housing stock. So with that in mind, uh again, same question, but this time related to housing, so. What priorities should we have for the housing portion of the comprehensive plan?
So we've, so far, every one of my responses are not accepted.
I was gonna say, it didn't take mine that time either.
Yeah, it's not taking mine.
Um, there is a refresh uh up in the top bar, uh it might be worth hitting that to see if it helps.
It might also be waiting until it gets a certain number of responses, but I I don't, none of what I've typed in there. And that, alright, alright.
So Judy, what I've found is, uh, if you have a a skip ahead on your screen, hit that skip ahead and that'll, that'll get you. Um, it'll kinda unlock it so you can put in your your feedback.
Oh, it worked, thank you.
So no surprise, uh affordability, um.
I I worry about the affordability index because. So far, by dictating affordability. We're taking big five-acre lots, creating just the ability to put a um apartment complex on it. We're having these huge complexes of apartment after apartment after apartment system. Which takes, reduces the quality of life because now we're bringing down, we're increasing the traffic. We're making our, us a bedroom community for other cities. We're telling the builders how they can build, so that's why I said let the market dictate itself. I mean, if they wanna build the homes, let them build the homes, if they wanna build apartments, let them build apartments.
So, you know, what we've just historically seen over time is we've had, you know, areas in Lacey that are most primarily single-family. And then primarily multifamily, the single-family through the nineties into the, kind of the mid-two thousands all got built out. And so what was left were the multifamily sites and now we're seeing the the results of that with, basically all we have left is the multifamily sites that are, they're being developed. That that's primarily north of I five, especially out in Hoxbury, that seems to be where kind of that that thrust is at that point.
It seems like the, I mean, houses that are under two hundred are, don't exist anymore and if you're thinking about. Starter homes and and opportunities for people to build equity, like having a triplex, looking at how you can portion off the land and actually have those as. Condos or something that was sellable, makes a lot more sense than just having. You know, really expensive houses and really expensive rentals, there needs to be that starter home back into our community. So that people actually can stay and.
I mean, you're, you're hard-pressed right now to find even a mobile home without land for less than two hundred.
So, um, D R Horton is building a a new de- development by North Hurst High School that is, uh, it's got some homes that are fourteen hundred. To fifteen hundred square foot starter home models, brand new, granted, but they're going for about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yes, that's not affordable.
And so, so even even starter homes, what what would have been categorized as a starter home is now, you know, or in the neighborhood of about five hundred thousand dollars.
You know, and this is what makes me nuts, right? So everybody, you know, you push for fifteen dollar and now everyone's, so that's about thirty-one thousand dollars a year. How is somebody making thirty-one, even up to fifty thousand a year, supposed to afford a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar house?
You can't and and the unfortunate thing is that we're driving the people who work in our communities, like teachers.
Yes.
Out of the community, they cannot afford to live.
Well, that's why you're seeing so many communities now.
Can't get a, they can't get a lot.
Starting to build teacher housing.
Yeah, yeah, teacher housing, police housing, they're thinking about in Seattle.
Yeah, I mean.
They're willing to pay, you know, police in Seattle a fifty thousand dollar boat signing bonus so they can afford to live there.
Yes.
That's crazy.
Well, some of the state jobs, if if they're in Seattle, you get a premium if you work in Seattle.
Yeah, yeah.
But you know, I mean. We talk about that here, right? A lot of us have been here long enough that we've seen these these economic changes in the housing and stuff like that, but. So. The the son and daughter-in-law that just bought the house at like Purdy, so they moved here from the Denver area. And it was a promotion for him with La Schwan. But he lost his Denver spiff.
Yeah.
So, because it's even more expensive in Denver.
You know that, all the things we're experiencing, you know, I have two kids that live in the Seattle area and it's just worse there, so you know, it's just like.
It is.
Relatively, we're affordable, which is why we've become, we have a lot of commuters, but um. Just further you get, or closer you get to Seattle, it's just incrementally significantly worse and uh. To affordability and traffic problems with, you know, where cars are parked, you know, you build a four-story apartment tower and then.
Right?
Hope the street parking's enough, you know, kinda thing, so, um, but it's it's worse, so relatively. We're providing options for people that wouldn't necessarily have them.
So Hans, it's seven o'clock, how are we doing on time?
We're gonna keep moving. Yeah, we're, we're, we're hitting there.
Have we ever looked at cooperative housing, groups of people meeting together to finance cooperative homes?
Yeah, um, and right now, it's it seems to be the really popular thing as far as manufactured home communities go.
Yeah.
It's a way for residents in a manufactured home park to actually buy their own, their own, um. You know, their land at that, that point is that they're able to, you know, do that, um, yes, um. That exists, um, or we're, we're looking at that, I I am aware, it's not in in Lacey, but in, I think it's.
There are some cooperatives in Seattle that are building.
There's a development at the intersection of Henderson and Yelm Highway that is a cooperative senior housing condo cooperative. That I'm aware of as well, so.
There's a cooperative development that's out on Cooper Point though as well.
Gotcha, so those things are becoming more popular.
Okay, so this next one is climate change and resiliency. Uh, so this is, as Ryan uh referenced earlier, it's a new requirement for this cycle. Um, that said, it has been something that's been represented outside our comp plan in the past, um, the. The guidance here is that it actually can take two different forms, that it can either be a standalone element. Uh, much like some of the other uh elements that we've been talking about, or it can be kind of integrated into each one of these chapters. Uh, so that's something we're gonna be looking at when we bring on the consultant. Um, but that said, so this chapter is really focusing on uh adapting to and mitigating the effects of a changing climate. Uh, so with that, uh, same exercise, what priorities should we have for the climate and resiliency portions of the comprehensive plan?
Quick question, I just wanna make sure we are not meeting our climate goals. Is, that's my understanding currently, like we are not there to what we pledged we would be at the current moment, is that correct?
Uh, as.
Cause I know the county is below its goals by a lot, but I don't know about the city specifically.
So we are just going to be working on updating those numbers, we don't have, our assumption is, is that we are not any closer to meeting our goals. Um, and so, uh, as part of this process, we'll be updating our our numbers and we'll have, you know, the 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 final numbers. Uh, I think, I think right now, we're, so we're always, when it comes to greenhouse gas emission calculations, we're always way behind. I think what we're, we're working on right now is the numbers for twenty twenty-two. Um, and so we hope to have an answer to that question here in the next couple of months.
And T F B C does have a report card that they put out for each municipality.
Okay.
Uh, so that is a resource that you can check out and it'll give you kind of a yearly, uh, maybe even quarterly report on kinda how everybody's doing. Given it's delayed because that's just when, when the information comes out and you have to retroactively kinda populate those report cards, but.
So, so when I hear the climate and resiliency portions of the comp plan, how do, I have to think in terms of. The planning commission, the the planning. Are are we planning for that for future? Um, goals or and how how is this affecting us as planning commissioner?
So, uh, the state is now requiring us to do climate planning and so part of that is that we need to make sure that. Um, greenhouse gas emission targets and those kinds of things are kind of interwoven through all of our different plans and policies for the comp plan. So that could be the the land use element, the transportation element, those kinds of things. And then specifically, we are required to have a um, a climate resiliency element now as well. So basically says what are we gonna do if, um, we have a extreme heat event in the summertime or um, a flood or something like that? What are our kind of vulnerabilities as a community as climate change evolves?
I'm a little confused as to what the city can do outside of the municipal actions itself in terms of its fleets and its. You know, maintenance and buildings and things like that.
Yeah, so I'm trying to think like, how are we going, how could we meaningfully implement this into a code change in a way that's going to. Encourage development and make the community that we we all vision, but not, I I just not seeing how we can do that. In a language format here.
So a good example is like, there's a couple of comments on there about reducing ones.
Okay.
Into a landscaping code.
Okay, that that's an excellent one, I didn't see that on there.
Well, but then you have the the water issues, you know, for.
The water issues are huge.
Right, so, you know, there's, it always seems like there's something hiding this for that.
Well, and and you know, that that goes to a good point that oftentimes, you know, you hear of like, well, we need to do more solar installations in in housing, right? Which then pushes up housing costs, which pushes on housing affordability.
Or EV charge stations and in the commercial buildings, so all of a sudden, charge, you know, who's paying for that?
Right.
There are community solar programs, if we could, I mean, Lacey.
Subsidized solar.
Yeah, and have people buy into it and that, and that way you could shade the parking lots and get the energy, I know.
That million-dollar, million-square-foot building could be a good solar farm.
That was my initial thought, is Hoxbury should be littered with massive solar farms on top of those white roofs.
Again, we're in the northwest.
Still, Germany is the number one producer of solar energy in the world and they have the same climate as us.
To make solar effective, you have to have a ten per, ten-year payback.
So.
And if you don't start building your building.
I stand solidly behind Spitzer, so Germany is at the same latitude we are. They have the exact same number of solar days that we do, which is two hundred and. They have the exact same number of solar days that we do, which is two hundred and forty-six, two hundred and fifty a year. Forty percent of Germany's energy comes from solar. We can do it here.
Doesn't have to be something.
Doesn't have to be sending, just as in life.
And and the technology, something I studied in grad school, sustainability studies twenty years ago, but the technology was not viable then in a commercial capacity. And and now it we are there, we are getting those payback periods, we are getting the efficiency levels we need to make this something that should be ubiquitous. But I don't feel like we need to be putting it on the homeowner directly through the code because it's gonna make affordability even less affordable. I think we need to come up with some creative ways to make the most able people, the large, large companies that are coming in and occupying these huge spaces, footing the majority of that bill and not put it on either the small business person who's running a coffee shop or the person who's trying to buy their home in the community to live in. Um I know that's a big ask, but like in my mind, that feels the most equitable way to go about this. Anybody else think that too?
So I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think this discussion is going to be better when we're actually talking about this portion. Right now, I think Hans is just looking for ideas tonight. And I'm not trying to cut you off, just trying to keep us rolling in in that. So because you've got some excellent points.
I think that we were reading before, like, you know, planting trees and that the A four station is this accurate where it's used to be a prairie, but actually turning that into like a forest and finding different ways to to actually have the carbon sequestration and and stuff like that. But I think different ways to prevent that sprawl and and.
Well, and even encouraging when when people are landscaping their properties, encourage native plants.
Mm-hmm.
Let's not be bringing in these exotic trees and these exotic shrubs and stuff. Let's keep it native so that those plants know how to live here.
Don't eat as much water.
Less water, right? Yeah.
That's one of the things that I put is um, you know, give some sort of a guidance or or um oversight that homes and HOAs aren't pressured to have these traditional front lawns. Because that, we know, that's not good for the environment.
Mm-hmm.
So the next one is the transportation element.
Yes.
Uh so the goals of this one are really to develop and maintain a street network that emphasizes a multimodal transportation system supporting all transportation types. So with that in mind, uh same question this time as it relates to the transportation portion of the comprehensive plan.
Oh, I think I pressed the wrong button.
I saw that intercity transit is purchasing some hydrogen buses.
Are they good?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, well, that'll go great with the incoming facilities too.
We found out years ago, cause we were buying the hybrid buses. And when we got into, after five years of ownership, get got into the economic analysis, it's costing us fifty percent more for those hybrid buses than it was for the diesels.
Yeah.
No.
Higher print costs and more expensive to maintain.
Exactly.
And uh.
Very hard to get.
Do you have any problems getting?
Yes. Well, the the big problems with it was.
There's a bunch.
When you order hybrid, switched from the cat diesel to.
A lot of pedestrian bikes, bike lanes, sidewalks.
So you're. Every time you walk by, you'll.
Charging stations.
Yeah, just just seems like they should have smaller buses or these trucks. I've never seen a full bus, not once in the city.
Ridge over college.
It's usually the homeless people hanging out this big door.
Does Lacey have an advanced pool system like Hears County does?
Two or three.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I always think Hears County was, but.
The handle of primary, but the city bus that never been one.
Landry, intercity transit.
But you're not seeing of the times.
Yeah.
There's so no, still, maybe I just don't go to the right place yet.
But you're not seeing in this time with the same.
Yeah, when I worked at Hears before, I was in advanced.
Yeah, that's where we could we could just.
Sure, that every.
The county intercity transit or Hears County.
It's like just bias, but or so right instead of first car, I agree.
Okay, cool. I don't listen to Hears County.
Nor are they self-supporting.
Correct.
Never will be.
All right, so seen a lot here, pedestrian bicycles, um you know, I I see a lot related to multimodal transportation. Anything else?
Roundabouts, less stoplights, thank you.
Like the merger of College Street, we actually studied.
I like a good roundabout.
Ridge over College Street?
We're roundabouts less stoplights.
And that's true.
Okay.
Words.
Less less idly.
Oh, that's okay, okay.
Yeah, is it like zebra light and zebra crosswalks?
It seems very expensive, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you press a button and people can actually tell someone's about to walk instead of just, you know, kids in dark clothes on a dark rainy day?
Those are so cool.
Yeah.
Those are so cool for making sure you don't hit a pedestrian.
Yeah.
Which I don't wanna do.
Yeah.
All right, any more coming in on this one?
Good transit, you know, the same.
Okay, so I believe this is the last question of this type. Uh we're also, we have an economic development element. Uh the goals here are to ensure a healthy economy uh that is characterized by quality job creation, retention, and the resources to provide adequate services. So with that in mind, what are uh what priorities should we have for the economic development portion of the comprehensive plan?
Just as a reminder, you know, we heard on the at the outset that, you know, more kind of local entertainment gathering establishments is really a high priority that could be reflected here as well. Um we heard about family wage jobs too, right? My life. After hours recreation, versifying businesses.
So. By the way. But yeah, I think that would be the best way. That way we can really contemplate.
Entertainment venues, a venue for events.
Yeah, cause I can see.
Anything else?
I'll say I appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Are they gonna have music and and other things at the 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 nights at the the depot? Uh or what is it? They're starting to do that with the food trucks, right?
The depot market.
Yeah, so there's there's music and movies scheduled at the uh the park.
Hundred percent.
I think the Friday night market at the depot is gonna have some different things each Friday.
Is it?
It's a first Friday.
It's a Friday now?
It's every other Friday.
Yeah.
And the first one is on the day after tomorrow.
It's Friday time at the night market, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, so.
Isn't it tomorrow or Friday?
Friday, yeah.
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
The after tomorrow. Or Thursday.
Yes. Truth. Thursday, yes, that's right.
Public heated pool is, I don't know if that's on there. A a heated pool that's public.
We heard that at the county meeting, remember that? Were you there for that?
Things always come down to foods.
People, families love those pools, so they love them.
Okay, any others coming in on this one? Okay, so one of the other uh significant requirements of the Growth Management Act as it relates to uh these comprehensive plan updates is that there's a strong emphasis on community engagement, requiring early and continuous public participation throughout the development and then adoption of a comprehensive plan. Um so with that in mind, uh we have, this is a little bit of a different style uh question here. Uh but what is your preferred blend of outreach? So on the uh one access, we have attending events, so traveling to and attending things in person. And at the other end of that is, I'm sorry, so this is from the perspective of the city. So this would be the city staff going to existing events that are scheduled within the community uh and doing smaller kind of booth-style pop-ups uh events, uh educational. And at the other end of that spectrum, we have hosting events where we have events here uh and bring the community to City Hall uh to engage and participate. Uh and that's not to say that we won't do either one of these or we'll do one of these more, but it's just that's kind of different ends of that spectrum. And then on the other axis, we have virtual online, so that's things like surveys uh and kind of that uh social media outreach and engagement through different platforms in that way. And then in person, it's the other end of that spectrum. So again, that's attending the events and having those in-person conversations. So these are all different types of outreach that we will utilize uh through the comprehensive plan. Um but this question is really just what is your preferred balance of all of these different types of outreach?
So Hans, if I say, just for example, preferred virtual versus in-person, I should be on the left side of the range.
Yeah, closer to whichever uh one is your preference.
Gotcha.
Please mark it on the graph if that you do. Oh, in here, okay.
So it looks like at this point, it's towards attending events, so attending already existing events and then more kind of towards in-person rather than virtual.
Well, now a group squeeze. Might be worth having a dedicated staff person who does this, who attends events in the greater Thurston area and is a representative and pops a tent up at these, you know, community events and says, hey, do you have questions about the city of Lacey? Ask me or come give your feedback on what's happening. Here's all the community projects we have lined up. Here's the public notices that you'd normally have to drive by to to or, you know, be really vested, so come talk to us, come get this info. Um you know, I think that would be a great boon to the city and would probably have a really good outreach. But the pragmatic pragmatic portion of me says online is where you're gonna get the greatest engagement. It's probably very shallow compared to those in-person events where you're gonna get high-quality feedback, but probably not as much of it, and it costs more money, of course.
Yeah, so what what we're working on with developing information with our consultant is that we all have a staff member, probably a majority of the city-sponsored events over the summer. Uh but we also need to have kind of the, we need to, we need to do everything. So we need to do the online stuff as well. We need to probably host some events. And and that's also representative, if you look here, basically, we're maybe skewing a little bit more towards attending events and maybe a little bit more in person, but it's pretty much in the middle. Um and this is where the council landed as well, was the council was almost dead in the middle of Bullseye. And and so it just goes to show that I think with everybody's, everybody has kind of their own individual preference. But but when it comes down to it, we just, we just need to do kind of do it all.
Yes.
Where was the youth?
Uh youth council?
I think there were a little bit more on the virtual side of thing, virtual, and then attending events.
Yeah.
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 So in that corner.
You know, I I disagree that you get you get sort of shallow feedback online. On a number of the surveys that went out, especially during COVID, I think people took a lot of time to think about some of that stuff and really filled them out pretty thoroughly. We got a lot of good stuff back from those.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and and you know, engagement at events, sometimes um some of the events are more kind of regional in nature. So for example, like the third of July fireworks isn't just all Lacey residents, right? And so a lot of times, if we just wanna stop and talk to somebody or if they wanna come talk to us, sometimes they don't even live in the area. And so we need to kind of keep that in mind too, that we need to be more targeted towards those events that are, you know, people that live and work here, maybe, you know, primarily versus those that maybe just came for the firework show and then they're gonna leave. So you know, those, there are other ways to do that. There's, you know, pop-ups in front of businesses and those kinds of things too, that get more kind of local folks rather than these big regional events that we do host in the summertime.
Well, and if you wanna attract, you know, maybe the groups that weren't, aren't well represented, virtual is where you're gonna get that. If I'm commuting to Seattle to work, I'm I'm not gonna come to an event. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna go find my nightlife in Tacoma or Seattle and and I'm gonna be on a bus or in a carpool and I'm gonna be on my phone. So that we really need to keep that, and that's cheap too.
Yeah.
It's inexpensive. We can do a ton of it.
A good example, one we could have done is the phone show.
Oh, I see, yeah.
That route to just answering everybody's questions. I think I would answer well, but.
One of the other thing is.
We have empty mistakes.
They're responding online, can feel a little bit more anonymous.
Anonymous, yeah, yeah.
Or or more honest.
Yeah.
I will say that in person, there is a level of playing telephone or interpreting what somebody's saying versus when there's an opportunity for them to write directly. Uh that eliminates that need to interpret what somebody's saying to you into uh some kind of presentation or text that you can then carry forward, incorporate.
Sometimes some of the in-person things tend to be um a little bit nimbey. You know, you're, I don't want this, I don't want that, get that out of my neighborhood kind of thing, which is, you know, you it's not a true mix of how people feel. It's only the people who were angry enough to show up sometimes.
Well, you're always, you know, you're always gonna get that, right?
Yeah, right.
Promoting is solar. I don't want that ugly solar out there, right? So.
What I've found when we do in-person events, it's great for the awareness and education component of it. And it's directing people to where those resources are. And then the online component is more where they take that time uh when they have time. And it's not necessarily while they're passing by, but they can actually dedicate time and actually think out that comment or that, whatever it might be.
Yeah.
And provide it, so yeah, something that I found is that these are all definitely important and very helpful as far as that, but they can fill different roles within the engagement process. Uh so, yeah. Anything else on this one?
Pretty pretty well, lining right in the middle, didn't we?
Well, I think. Yeah, this is the last one. Uh and this is an open-ended question again. Uh this update is successful if. So what does success through this process look like to each one of you?
Two hundred characters.
More or less.
You're talking about the update of the comprehensive plan, correct?
Yeah, at the, once we get to that final stage of adoption, looking back at this process, what does success look like to each one of you? Or what would that feel like if we can look back on this process and feel like we did a good job of it?
Comments here about um public engagement, um resident priorities. Good comments about kind of protecting the environment, but you know, as we change.
kind of protecting the environment, but you know, as we change. So those are all really good. Anybody else?
I got some novelts coming your way.
Yeah, I was watching the word count.
I'm cleaning up my consulting company, by the way.
You can set it all out and maybe add it or something.
You know, I gotta tell you, as somebody that's lived in this community as long as I have, I read these comments right now. And it tells me we have the right group of people sitting on this commission. These are exactly the kind of people I've been working with.
Great, well, we got eight of them, anybody else?
No, we're still, Hemmingway is still.
The old man took the boat.
All right.
You're in for the sixteen-hour struggle then.
So any thoughts or comments on what you guys see here?
I like the cohesive city identification.
That was the novelist.
Worth the effort then, huh?
Yeah, you know, words matter.
And if you have a chance to spend a couple minutes and pick the right ones, cuz it could be too broad.
I was really surprised they stayed for the historical presentation. I didn't know that this was like a resort town where people came to hang out at the lakes.
There used to be eighteen resorts. Oh, yeah, it was amazing.
That is, that is.
And I tried to, I I I'm working with Rick, it's, I had this idea when I first got into council of getting placards up at each of our parks to talk about why that was a significant development or resort or something like that. And our park director sadly died and that idea died with it, but Rick Walk and I are working on maybe reviving it.
And the racetrack, don't forget the racetrack.
Yeah, the Lacey Coast stuff, this was a private race track.
Yes.
Race track, yeah.
People came from all over the the area just to race there because of its unique soils.
Like the, oh, horse racing or?
Horse racing.
Horse racing. Oh, oh, it was um.
There's a placard there.
Yeah, what is the, it wasn't.
Lacey Downs.
Oh, it was the uh, it was where you ride in the little cart behind the horse.
Yeah, what is that called?
Oh.
Chariot.
Yeah, but it's got another name.
There's another name for it.
Another name for it, yeah. And it was the premier track in Western Washington.
But that speaks to having something in Lacey that's unique to Lacey and it's not replicated in, you know, Tacoma or in, you know, Everett or, you know, something, you know, just what could be something that that they come to Lacey for, that's different.
Are you thinking of harness racing?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Okay, well, that's the end of this uh topic for the evening.
Yeah.
Were we gonna hear that, something about the tree amendment?
Yeah, yeah.
After, after we're done, so are we done with this subject?
Yeah, so just to kind of wrap this part up, um we'll take this information with what we did with the city council, the youth council and kind of package it all up, provide it to our consultants that are gonna be working on on our engagement plan. So they'll kind of understand what some of the initial priorities are of of the council, the planning commission and the youth council. And then also kind of understand some of the the challenges with with the engagement. And uh once we have the next step for us, we'll be, we'll be developing that engagement plan. And as we develop that plan, we'll be briefing the planning commissioner along the way and eventually bring that plan to you to review. So, you know, that's gonna get into things like, well, what events are we gonna be at? And you know, those kinds of things. And so that's gonna be the next step along the way is as we continue this kind of visioning discussion, the next step will be with the community. And so we'll kind of go through how we're gonna do that and then engage all the way through that call plan process. So that'll be the next step on this. So hope to hear something back in the next a month, two months on um on the engagement plan and have that in front of you.
It's awesome. So our young guest here, her name is Hallie. And she's got some thoughts on what we talked about tonight. So I've asked her to send an email to Ryan. And Ryan can forward those thoughts to us. And I've asked her to come back to a future meeting so that we have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions if we want to.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
So that brings us to the old business section that was added to the agenda, so.
So, yeah, so this is leaving off where, or picking back up where we left off with the neighborhood commercial districts. Uh so, yeah, we ran through pretty much everything that was in the draft code with the addition of additional kind of tree uh specific regulations that we wanted to be added to the neighborhood commercial district uh code. Um so this slide is actually one that has been in front of you guys quite a few times. Uh but again, it's just a refresher that, again, these districts are uh housed within many other codes that also apply to them, specifically things like environmental performance standards, uh landscaping and tree and vegetation uh preservation. So everything that's in the proposed draft code and then what we're looking at tonight is in addition to those other overarching kind of larger umbrella categories that are also out there. Um but here's the new draft language and it is uh, it's really uh two lines. Uh and then I'll read it and then I'll get into what each one of those means. Uh so the new draft language is minimum tree threshold, so it's a, it's some kind of category. Um but it's multi-family lot standards consistent with table, and I'll tell you what that table is in a second. Uh shall apply to all portions of the district. Uh and then as a follow-up to that, when evaluating sites uh with existing trees, site uh and project design shall be consistent with, and then this is a a reference to a section within our landscaping code. And I'll go through what that is in a second as well. Um so the first part, just breaking this out into two different sections. Uh so that minimum tree threshold uh that's highlighted there across the top, references table fourteen T, uh which is within our tree preservation code of our comprehensive plan. And really what it does is that it recognizes that uh these districts, specifically these neighborhood commercial districts, are our closest commercial districts to residential zones for the most part. So in recognition of that, it's changing what uh their currently adopted designation is as it relates only to trees. From a a commercial designation to a multi-family designation. And within this table that's linked at the top here, under the commercial designation, it's two trees per ten thousand square feet. And that's both for developed or developing lots. And it takes it from that and moves it to four trees per five thousand square feet, which is the multi-family requirement uh within other sections of our code, so for residential code, for multi-family. Uh that's the requirement there. So it increases the number of trees and then it actually decreases the number of square footage. And to put that kind of more in context, that might be a little bit more understandable. Uh on an example, five-acre uh site, our existing code would require forty-four trees based on that commercial designation for that five-acre site. If we were to change it to the multi-family designation, uh that forty-four trees goes up to a hundred and seventy-four trees on that same site. So it's a very significant increase in the number of total trees required across the site.
I have a question, um on that table, it says require new trees or saved trees. So this is giving me the idea that we're preserving what's there, but this table, which is the reference, if I'm understanding correctly, is saying that they could plant new trees to replace those, is that?
Yes, so there is, there is language in there. And then it also covers to some extent uh sites that don't have trees. So this is that, also that planting component. So say if it's a fully just covered in grass kind of field site, and there's still that tree threshold that's required.
And so Hans will go into the other part of the code, the six, the sixteen-eighty portion, which is actually talking about the preservation, so.
And then, so that's, yeah, that was a perfect segue into the the requirement or reference underneath the primary change. Uh so that's when evaluating sites with existing trees, uh site and project design shall be consistent with. And this blue highlighted code is referencing our landscaping section and that code is really copied here below. Uh so it speaks to uh conditions within required landscaping areas. And I did kind of leave that one out because really what we're interested in this context is outside of the required landscaping area, the applicant shall be required to retain significant trees. Uh special attention shall be given to the preservation of, and then it goes into this category of really defining what a special tree is. Uh so that has to do with healthy trees over sixty feet in height and sixteen inches in diameter, measured twenty-four inches above grid. Uh trees that form a continuous canopy, trees that contribute to the character of the environment and do not constitute a safety hazard. And then to protect against blowdowns, the city encourages that areas of tall, older tree stands will be retained um via at least fifty feet in width. It's a little bit funky in our language there, but you get the idea. Um so this is existing code, but it's just bringing it back into our neighborhood commercial district. So it's really emphasizing, placing additional emphasis on lots with existing trees. So.
There was an, and those two things together.
Yeah.
And this is done in coordination with our city arborist, correct?
Correct, so.
Every development.
Yeah, so when there's a site that is, comes in for development, uh I think it's supposed to be in the first initial kind of site planning phase. An arborist is required to go out and identify every single tree that's on that site. And then they actually develop a report based on the health and quality of each one of those trees and provide recommendations. And this actually gets more into the tree tract, but also for this code, as far as where to prioritize trees, um provides recommendations on what zones of that site should be specifically protected based on the health and quality of the trees across the entirety of the site. So they give recommendations on where the buildings should go, uh where the parking lots should be located with the intent of preserving the best quality existing trees on that site. So it's twofold, so it's setting a requirement for the number of trees that are required on any given site and then also providing additional context on when there are already existing trees that they are prioritized as part of the preservation of those trees on that site.
And it seemed to me that that language is keeping, it it's putting the neighborhood commercial into the flavor of a multi-family development, which is gonna keep the cohesiveness going from one area to another.
Yeah, and that actually is a great point. So with the addition, uh so that the updated draft language includes uh more opportunity for residential development on the ground floor. So there is definitely gonna be more of a residential component to these sites moving forward than has been historically. So that's, that's a great point.
So, so the way that read, read was like two hundred and fifty square feet of of trees for the fifty feet. It basically fifty by fifty.
Yeah, so the, that references when trees are being preserved. Uh a lot of them grow up in stands, so when you knock down uh groups and expose kind of internal trees that are historically familiar with being in stands, they become more vulnerable to things like blowdown and things like that. So it's keeping that in mind. It's really the entirety of the life cycle of the tree is being thought about when these decisions are being made. Uh so you don't just expose a center's tree that doesn't really necessarily have the root structure that one of the fringe trees might have.
In the development next to us, which is the future police academy, right? Did that apply to that?
Yep.
And so that would be an example of.
Given that's in the commercial designation, so moving forward, we'll be talking about the multi-family, but for the purpose of the discussion, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it didn't necessarily have to be two hundred and fifty square feet, it would be conglomerate of of wherever the tree stands were.
Yeah, so there are also tree tract requirements, which this didn't address, but are already a requirement of these sites. So this would be in addition to those tree tract requirements. Um but it, the nice thing about this is that it also does create some flexibility for the developer as far as the location of these trees. So it's more of a discussion with the arborist as far as where those trees are saved and preserved.
Flexibility is what I was looking for.
Yeah.
And does, what about stormwater retainage? Does that affect the stormwater retainage systems that have to go in for the sites, the size of these developments?
Uh that would definitely be something that would be looked at, uh anytime that there's a site, a tree uh retention, that's, that's something that's considered as part of that uh application and process.
I mean, you gotta remember, every new development, they have to retain stormwater on site.
That's, that was why the question, cuz it can be quite extensive. It can be the entire parking lot, in fact. It would also change the drainage concept of the trees or wood water utilization they have. Some sixty-foot trees rely on streams you don't even know are there.
These are good changes, these make me happy.
I mean, I think it's captured the the.
Yeah, the sense of what.
The concept of what the commission wanted.
As we could, yeah.
And just to clarify, the six-foot deciduous that was the two-inch and the seven-foot conifers, that's if they have to replace a tree, they have to be at least that tall when planted. So no orn, little ornamental.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so also the, the size of each tree that's being replaced is factored into that. So we also have different sections of our code that cover that replacement value.
Yeah, thank you.
Go on. Any comments on that, Judy?
I do not have anything to add, no.
Okay.
So the next steps, um we'll be going to the council for work session coming up uh in May. And we'll let planning commission know um when that, when that's occurring. So um for those that want to attend, can understand that, you know, the, at this point, we'll be presenting the planning commission's recommendation and that the council may ultimately land in a slightly different spot. Um but at this point, you know, that's what they're gonna be considering is the planning commission's recommendation and and um going from there. So we'll, we'll let you know when that is, who you can attend. You know, I think at that point, it will really be the staff providing the planning commission recommendation. We'll have planning commission members, maybe Jeff, I think you've indicated that you wanna be there to help answer any questions and those kinds of things as far as, you know, if any details need to be, you know, ironed out and and anything about, you know, what the planning commission's, you know, thought process was on anything, some of the feedback that you might have heard and those kinds of things. It's always important to provide that context. So uh we'll certainly let you know when that meeting's gonna occur, so you can, you can attend and provide that feedback.
Awesome. So the May eighth, as I mentioned earlier, May the meeting is canceled, our next meeting is May twenty-two. Does anybody have anything else for the good of the order? Right, thank you all very much, good work tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
All right, good night.